Item 12, City Manager Comment.
I just want to encourage the citizens to get involved. There's a lot of things going on in City Hall. As Councilman Greenwood already talked about, we got our Public Safety Forum which is gonna be great, on the 21st. We got flyers on the table for this Saturday for the Boy Scouts. Our mentoring program is coming back to the city. The mayor has a Restoration of Hope program that's gonna be going on from the 21st through the 24th. So there's a lot of things going on and I want you guys to be involved, or get involved. I want to get you engaged. I want to give you access points so you can be a part of your city government, and everybody else does too. But that takes you trying to be actively involved in the process. And we're trying to give you things so you can be involved and so you can be informed. Monday night we had our intro to disaster preparedness.
Emergency Disaster Seminar.
There it is. We had Emergency Disaster Seminar. It wasn't well attended. So we want you to get engaged. We want you to be involved. We are your city government, and that means that you play a role in your city government. So we want you to be involved, and we're trying to give you programming and events so you can be involved as well.
Thank you, City Manager. Item 13, we have City Council comments. Let me start with Councilman Mosley. Councilman, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers and mayor and citizens, you know it's tax year, and you have your tax bill. And I know you're upset, so you really need to sit down with the city council or the city manager and ask for a meeting. Have a county official to come down and explain to you what's going on, and then you'll know firsthand. You have this person tell you something, this person tell you something, and they don't know no more than you. But if you have the county to come down and have a meeting in here or wherever you want to have it, down in the Baton, and they can explain to you about the taxes. I just want you to understand that and do that because it's important that you know about your own self. So the city manager is right here, the mayor, and you all give it to county board officials and send them meetings. So you can have the citizens, the representatives up in the county, to come down and explain to you why your taxes went up and whatever reason is it going down or whatever. Thank you.
I want, I thought I was gonna finish, but I saw the city manager had his hand up there.
Sure. Mr. Mosley, just to let everybody know, I had a meeting with the county assessor on Thursday about this very issue. We're actively working on scheduling the time for her to come down and address the citizens about the tax issue. So it's something that we're actively working on. I've had discussions with her about it, and I've talked to other people about it. So we're trying to get to an answer, and we're trying to figure out how to get information to you so you know what happened and what is going to happen as far as the taxes are concerned. So feel free to set up a meeting with me if you want to personally talk about your situation. Feel free to come talk to me about it. I'll pass on the information that I currently have, and I'll pass on the information as I get it as well. But it's something that we're, it's an issue, not just with the residents, but also the businesses that we're actively working on trying to figure out what's going on.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilwoman, any comments?
I'd like to know, what is the penalty if we don't get the bills paid?
The tax bill paid?
No, not the tax bill. The budget amendment, the outstanding budget amendments that we did not get approved tonight. What position are we legally are we in and financially?
Legally?
It doesn't put us in a specific position except for a position to possibly have litigation.
Why we're not working enough for it to speak up to you?
I'm sorry, it just puts us in the position to possibly have litigation filed against the city.
Lawsuits.
And we've already received threats, Ms. Forrest-Mosley?
I have not received any threats or demands.
Yes. I have, yes.
Okay.
So we could possibly get sued for not paying our bill. Councilman?
So with the sort of like a state takeover or something, I mean, let us know something. I mean, we don't know this. So what to happen? If the city keeps saying we'll get sued or we don't pay bills, what to happen?
Well, we'll go ahead and address that now. What's happening is, we're trying to build a relationship with our vendors, and what it makes us look like is that we're irresponsible and that we're not a good partner. Anytime we don't pay our bills and the services and a service hasn't been provided. So those bills need to be paid so that we can better, so that our relationships can get better and not worse, and we can better partner.
Paying bills that you put some on, you know?
Some of the, we can't put anything on it if it's not passed through the budget amendment. Councilman? Councilwoman Hammond?
I don't have any comments. Thanks.
Councilman Eastern, you got your comment?
No.
Now you start. Before we give, before I give my comments, I want to go back, since we do have all members here, and revisit items, items 6D and E. 6D and E. Madam Clerk, is there any way, is there any system that I need to follow to put those back on the floor?
Just need to go back, get a motion, huh?
All right. Thank you. So we're gonna go back to items 6D and 6E. Is there a motion? This is, 6D is the Presentation of a Resolution Appropriating Motor Fuel Tax Funds for Professional Engineering Services. This is one of the items that Ms. Gert talked about as far as, that needs to be approved through IDAT so that we can go ahead and get those streets fixed. Is there a motion to approve item 6D?
Make them up.
Thank you. Been moved by Councilman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding. Are there any questions?
You have 6E.
6D.
6D.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I'm sorry, the motion was made by?
The motion was made by Councilman Eastern. It was seconded by Councilwoman June Hamilton-Ding.
Councilman Mosley?
No.
Councilman Hamilton-Ding?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
No.
Mary Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have three I's and two N's.
Motion passes. Item 6E, Presentation of a Resolution for the Marion City Council to Award a Contract to Thompson Civil LLC for Preliminary Engineering Services for Street Improvement at Various Locations in the City of St. Louis. This piece of legislation goes along with 6D, the item that just passed. Is there a motion to approve item 6E?
To move.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman June Hamilton-Ding. Do you have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
No.
Councilman Hamilton-Ding?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
No.
Mary Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You got three I's and two N's.
Motion passes. For the citizens, just so you know, as far as the budget amendment, we cannot pass a budget amendment. It has to be four votes for that. Just so you know. Takes more than three votes for a budget amendment. We're gonna go back to City Council comments. Do you have any more comments from City Council? Again, I want to encourage the citizens to get involved. We do have the Explorer Program that will be going on here. This program is designed to help our youth shadow different professions from the ages of 16 to 20. It's a program that we're campaigning on promoting so that we can advance the leadership, the education, and all of that of our youth for the city. So we encourage you to get involved. The city manager also mentioned the Restoration of Hope cleanup. This restoration, the cleanup will not just be for June 21st to the 24th. June 21st to the 24th will cover the first project, and we have a lot of volunteers. We have clergy. We have all kinds of entities getting involved in this, and we have various projects. But these projects are not just, the way we're setting it up and the way we're organizing is to sustain it. We don't want to have cleanups and then it's not sustainable. And these will be year-round, so we're encouraging citizens to get involved with that. We'll just move on now to citizens' comments. We have Mr. Nathaniel Jeffries. You here?
Yeah, he just walked out.
Mr. Nathaniel Jeffries?
Yes.
You're up.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm trying to put a flea market at 1502 State Street.
Sir, can you speak up? Device are not working.
I'm trying to put a flea market at 1502 State Street. I've been in business at 16 State Street for 19 years, and I come down to your application and they have been all email applications coming through there. They said it had been passed, but it didn't get passed, but when I went back to the license, I still didn't get one. So that's why I'm here today, see if I can get a license for flea market at 1502 State Street in St. Louis.
Do we have any comments from Council?
City Manager, do you know, can you check into this? Because I think regulatory affairs had some issues or something that was going on with that particular location. I don't know what it is, sir. I can't, you know, can you just check into that?
Sure.
Can you just get, I ask you back to Mr. Jeffries?
My definitely.
I will say that one of the concerns that council has currently at this point is we've had, we've issued pepper licenses to people, and they've taken that and erected these little, you know?
Sheds.
What do you call it?
Sheds.
Sheds on State Street, and that's something that we're gonna have to deal with because it's got State Street looking like a flea market in and of itself. And that's not the presentation that we want to have as far as what's on that main street. So we're doing some research on that and how these people have erected these sheds. Because I don't believe that buying a pepper license gives them the rights to erect a shed.
Now, can I ask?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Now, is this gonna be inside or outside?
It's gonna be outside.
Okay.
I have a, I have a different plan. As you can see, I already got four bunkers installed down there, and I was going to put 12 more. And what I was thinking was that it would benefit the city if the pepper licenses were sold to the people that occupied the sheds or the corporates.
Well, one of the things that we're trying to do, Mr. Jeffries, is reestablish the process as far as the different businesses and things that are erected. And the reason why we're having to do that is because we have a planning commission, and then we have a planning department that we're working to establish. And so with that being said, we want to kind of get back to, and this is not, you know, saying anything negative about what you're trying to do, but I'm just explaining this to the citizens. We're trying to get back to putting businesses where they are properly zoned and so that it goes along with the plan that we have. And we do have a plan as far as, you know, where the different businesses should go. So give us the opportunity to go back and research this, Mr. Jeffries.
And understand.
How much time do we need, City Manager?
I'll contact him, and I'm not comfortable. I have regulatory affairs and doing a lot of research. I'll let him know.
So the city manager said he will definitely contact you after this conversation.
And if you can leave your phone number, if you can leave your phone number, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries.
Thank you.
Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
Ms. Martin, Ms. Mary.
Good evening, Mayor.
Councilman, citizens. Actually, life more abundantly is in the House tonight because of, the city is not moving forward like it should be. But, and I understand the city manager wanting the citizens to get involved, but it's hard to get involved when the council is not involved. You know, to hold a project up because one individual. Now, I know Mr. Slater is a very important person in the city, and I know he carries a lot of weight, but the whole, the rest of the city hostage because his street wasn't on the list is really mind-blowing. But I'm glad it got passed. And the budget, the budget that the city have, this city is, you know, regulatory affairs, people are still living in houses that's not fit for occupancy and stuff, but, you know, without a regulatory affairs, public works, and police and fire are the key elements to any city. And for you all to play games with those court departments and to not give them the tools and the services and the manpower they need to move this city forward is really, is really showing what you all are about, self-serving council persons. And Mr. Mosley also mentioned about the taxes. TIP is killing these people. When they get their tax bill and see that TIP has deciphered off $1,000 or $1,500 from their bill, their bill is $15 more because of TIP. So TIP, they end up just abandoning and walking away from their home. So that's why you have all these abandoned houses, derelict houses in the city, because when they get their tax bill and see how much TIP, which TIP is supposed to improve the city, it's supposed to bring businesses in it, but like the councilman that used to be here said that the council was using TIP as an ATM machine, and it's still being used as that. So that's why people are abandoning their property and moving out of here. It's not because of the taxes, it's because of TIP. So if you're gonna sit here and talk to the citizens, you need to tell them the truth. And I know you get the last word, Mr. Mosley, and I know you don't like when I say so, I'm gonna sit down and listen.
For a point of clarification, as far as TIP is concerned, it is true that as the property is assessed at more, we receive more, but I want the citizens to be there to understand clearly that we don't assess property. The county assesses property, and they increase or decrease the value of property. And based off their assessment of the property, you know, that determines how much we receive in TIP. Attorney, do you have any clarification on that?
I mean, you said it correctly, Mayor, that it's the county who makes the assessments on the property. A portion that you pay is given to the city in a TIP fund, but it's a portion that is fixed. It wouldn't change the amount. It's just, it changes where it goes. So it takes it back from the city general into an actual TIP fund, but it doesn't change the amount of the taxes. So it's not TIP that's causing?
But if we didn't have tax, then our property, we wouldn't have that. If we didn't have TIP, we wouldn't have that $900 or $1,000 added to our county, or will they reassess and attach it still?
It would go to a different, it would go to a different place.
Go to a different taxing body.
Because we have several different taxing bodies. The city is just one of them, and we don't, we haven't increased anything on our end. The increase has taken place with how the property was assessed, the dollar value of how the property was assessed. That has, that's the increase. And so, you know, you read many things in the paper, but you want to make sure that the proper picture is painted because it's not oftentimes. Okay? Ms. Thelma Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be speaking to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, Chapter 5, Illinois compiled statute, 120, Sections 1 to 6. And my concern is that which I, Thelma Williams, classify as the East St. Louis City Council's misunderstanding and misinterpretation of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Specifically, the East St. Louis City Council, at its council meetings, has habitually and continuously presented an agenda to the public and adopted and/or rejected various items included in the agenda without the public being privileged to the discussion surrounding such adoption and/or rejection. In other words, they're the liberations that led you to that point. The Illinois Open Meetings Act is designed to ensure that the public has access to information about government and its decision-making process. As a public servant, you, the city council, have a duty to ensure that Illinois residents, specifically East St. Louis residents, can obtain information about their government. On January 1st, 2010, key changes to the Open Meetings Act took effect to provide Illinois residents with a more open and accountable government. The Open Meeting Act defines public body to include all legislative, executive, administrative, advisory, state, county, township, city, villages, incorporated towns, school districts, and all other municipal corporations, boards, committees, commissions, other state, and any subsidiary body of any of the four boards, including but not limited to committees and subcommittees which are supported and wholly apart by tax revenue, of which expend tax revenue, except the General Assembly and committee or committees thereof. The Open Meeting Act defines a meeting to include any gathering in person or by video or audio conference, telephone call, electronic means, or other means of contemporaries, interactive communication of a majority of a quorum of members of a public body held for the purpose of discussing public business, or for a by-member public body, a quorum of members of a public body, led to the purpose of discussing public business. The Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires the meeting of public bodies be open to the public, except in certain specific limited situations where the law authorizes the public body to close a meeting. The Open Meeting Act also provides that the public must be given advance notice of the time, place, and subject matter of the meetings of the public body. There are penalties when the public body does not follow the Open Meeting Act. And there are exceptions, and I will not bother to deliberate them all, but if the public body decides to have a closed meeting, they must state which part of the statute applies to it. If a public body wants to hold a closed session, the public body must first meet in a properly noticed open meeting, then vote to close the meeting by a majority vote of the quorum present. The public body must cite the specific exemption in the Open Meeting Act that applies and allows the closure of the meeting. I have found the Open Meeting Act procedures in city council meetings here in East St. Louis to be gravely wanting. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. For that, each one of the council members have to take an Open Meetings Act training, and there are a couple of points that I want the attorney to address as far as the Opens Meeting Act and the deliberation. When you have deliberations of decisions, there's a certain point that needs to be addressed. Can you address that, attorney?
Good afternoon. Oh, okay to myself. Anyway, well, based on your notes that you provided to me and that you read here, and I thank you for reading that, the city takes very seriously the Open Meetings Act, and an open meeting now, it complies, complies with all of the requirements of an open meeting. I think you talked about the agenda and taking things off of the agenda.
Excuse me, I'm not privileged to your name.
My name is Tiffany.
But I don't need you to explain it to me. What I need you to do is explain it to those who don't understand. But what I do, the only reason why I said what I said this evening is because had it not been for the last meeting I've been?
Ms. Williams, I have to stop you because that's not in order as the attorney has the floor. We want to give her the same respect that we have.
I just wanted to say that you talked about agendas, and the requirement for the agendas just says that the agenda shall set forth the general subject of any matter for resolutional ordinance that there will be final action. So if the, if the council decides not to take final action and there's no discussion, they're not required to have discussion. If there is discussion of three or more, then it's required.
Read your statute.
Then it's required, I'm well aware of the statute. It's required to be open if there's, if there is a discussion of three or more. If there's not a discussion of a quorum, then it doesn't have to be had in an open meeting. So they are allowed to speak to each other as long as they're not speaking in a quorum, then it's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So if we have an instance where three of them congregated and spoke or spoke on the phone or in an email that wasn't open, then that would be a violation, but that's not, it's my understanding that that does not occur, that if they talk to each other individually, that's not a violation of the Open Meeting Act at all, because it's gotta be a meeting, which can be any type of gathering, but there must be a quorum.
City, attorney, I wanted you to address the issue of when a particular piece of legislation is adopted and/or objected, because that was, that was something that was addressed at the beginning.
So?
Does council have to give a public reason?
No.
For an objection or a piece of legislation being adopted?
They're not required to give any reason why they voted a certain way or why something was passed or not passed. They are free to comment, and they're not actually obligated to even comment when a citizen comes up and makes a complaint. They're not obligated to make, to give you an explanation. I think they do it because they want to be transparent and they want to give you?
You're obligated to follow the Illinois statute.
They are obligated to follow the statute, but they don't have to give a reason.
You are obligated to follow the Illinois statute, not you individually, but you and the entire person.
If there's a discussion, you have to be privy to the discussion. If there is no discussion, then there's nothing for you to be privy to. It's not a violation of an open meeting if there is no meeting.
I'm appreciating this discussion because it's very educational. As you can see, we all have something that we can kind of breathe upon. Thank you, Ms. Williams, as your comments are always very informative. We're gonna move on. Thank you, attorney, for that clarification. We're gonna move on to Ms. Robin Boyd.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I put these down, I wanted to show you all here up front what's happening here. My name is Robin Kerry Boyd. I thank you all for allowing me to be on your agenda. I am here as the president of the National Pan-Hellenic Council of East St. Louis. It's comprised of 12 chapters, and we represent non-black Greek-Later organizations. Also, I am the chairperson of a collaborative effort, Greeks for Peace, Stop the Violence Against Our Youth. This is an effort that we have come together to put on, and it's not just a march. I want y'all to know that this is a peace march, but it's not just a march. It's all about youth. I am an employee of the East St. Louis Board of Education. So children is what I do, and as a member of one of the Black Greek-Later organizations, we do lots of community service, and this is one of our efforts as we come together. I believe in synergy and working together with various organizations, and together we can make a difference. We have come together and we decided to lead the charge to recognize child abuse prevention. We started off doing it in April because that's Child Abuse Prevention Month, but now ran, we were ranked out, so we're in June, on January 25th. I'm a part- with the City of Centerville, and we are walking down bond, showing collaborative effort that we are for the youth of East St. Louis, Washington Park, Centerville. And on this day, we will have the American Heart Association supporting us with the water station, the Violence Prevention Center, Department of Children and Family Services, Captain Dumb Dancers, CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates. We will have radio stations, and so it's not just a march, it is all about youth. We are giving away one hundred t-shirts, collecting water, and I think I gave everybody, my husband gave you all a copy of the letter. What I'm saying here today is I invite you all, come on board, make this a positive venture. We ask that you all come on that day. It will not be a political forum, it will just be telling the youth that we are there, we support them, and we've invited various organizations to provide tables. Bring your own table and chair, sit out there and share your youth opportunities. So we have AmeriCorps, we have the Nine Black Greek-Later Organization, their youth groups, we invited churches, Jack and Cursey, anybody who touches on youth, youth camps, if you have any connection with youth, you are invited there on that day. Set it up, we're taking it to the streets, parents don't have to look for you, you'll be right there, and you go to the table, get information, oh, I can put my child in this youth group. Oh, I can join this, something to do for the summer, something to do all year, and again, we're just inviting everybody. I want you to know, going after bounce houses, free face paint, barbecue, and if you're feeling really crispy, you can join and sign up for a kickball tournament, and your team can take home the money. Flyers are gonna be the monitor, and you'll, so you'll see more about that. I want you to know that this is not our first venture. The NPAC, the Academy for the National Pan-Hellenic Council, we've collaborated with the city before, we did the Halloween party with the city, and we have hosted, along with the NAACP, the political forum. So again, we're for the city, but this particular venture is for youth. I invite you all to take just a moment to read the letter, consider what you can do to support this cause, whether it's a monetary donation, you're just coming out, we needed funds to do all of this, and everybody's just kind of donating. So if there's anything you have a connection to, I've asked somebody, they have connections to potato chips and frito-lays, and somebody did it. Somebody else donated, you know, water. We're up against now the heat, so water would be a commodity. So again, if you're interested, my email address is on here. Anyone in the audience that has a business or anything to do with youth, please let me know. We invite you to come on board, and we look forward to seeing many of you all present on June twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Boyd, for that presentation. Definitely, we are excited about what NPAC is doing. Our children are our greatest commodity, and we need to get behind and support. We have children that are being abused on a day-to-day basis, on an hour-to-hour basis, minute-to-minute, second-to-second. So this is an opportunity to get behind our children, show that we love and support them, and that, and to get behind one another. So we appreciate you.
Thank you for mentioning that, because these efforts are to keep them off the streets so they can, they won't be sitting around all summer and, you know, finding themselves in a complicated situation. So that is exactly it, no abuse against children, that's what we're standing for.
Thank you so much. Mr. Lonnie Slater? He's here. Mr. Dwayne Caraway?
Yeah, I'm a local contractor for the city. We did this project, started on the last year, we just got finished with it, we haven't got paid, and so in our opinion, vendors don't get paid, but we don't get paid. We just want to know the reason why, we don't get no answers. I mean, what's going on? Nobody can answer the question. It's a movie, yeah.
Well, I think that it's only fitting for those who didn't vote for it to ask that question.
Okay, well, could he answer?
I don't know if this is the place for it, or for, I don't know if council wishes to do that or not, but...
I mean, I mean, I mean, how would you like not paying your bills? I mean, because somebody else don't want to pay their bills? That ain't right.
City Manager?
This thing going on since last year.
Definitely, we want our bills to be paid.
I mean, I did, I did the contract, I mean, I did pay, I mean, yeah.
We did have a...
If somebody did wrong, I need to, I'll request that issue, let's do it.
We did kind of have a general fund budget amendment that we just voted on, it was voted down, and those payments are included on there.
Okay, well, can, can somebody tell me something? I mean, boy, you don't know nothing, so do we know something, somebody know something?
I know something, I know I voted for it.
I haven't got paid?
I voted for you to get paid. That's what I know. Now, what the unreadiness is of the other council members, they have to speak for themselves, I'm not going to put them on the spot, but maybe you can talk to them one-on-one about why they do...
I mean, we can put it out now, I mean, we can ask the questions.
Well, this is not really the forum, this is the forum for us to hear your concern. We don't have to answer on...
So we shouldn't have even just put nothing on the agenda, we should just let it alone and just...
This, this is not, Mr. Caraway. Mr. Caraway, this is not designed for a question-and-answer session.
Because, nothing, nothing is gonna get solved, never, never.
You're singing to the choir. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Jerry Cosner?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Jerry Cosner from JIMAX Park. We're also involved in the twenty fifteen demolition budget that isn't being paid out in the sixties. We followed your bid process to the T, completed demolitions in around two weeks in January, put the bill into the appropriate channels here in East St. Louis, and six months later, and unfortunately, we are not able to be paid. We do about three hundred and fifty to four hundred residential demos throughout central Illinois, and it's Rock Island, Rockford, Machenzi Park, and East St. Louis, Peoria, and unfortunately, after twelve hundred houses, this is the place where we got stuck with receivables that we can't pay. And I'm disappointed, I don't really understand how we can follow all the parliamentary procedures and then not be able to receive our reward. We paid the landfill, we paid Wayne's Trucking, we paid all your suppliers here, and here we are. And again, I'll be here back in July, and hopefully we'll get a difficult result. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Cosner, we want to thank you for coming. I know that we, I do understand, and for those who did vote for the general fund amendment, do understand it's important us paying our bills. We gotta pay our bills, we have to pay our vendors, it's getting to the point to where we're creating a bad relationship with people that have provided the service, but we have to have an amendment in order to do that. So hopefully, the unreadiness of the council members who did not vote for it will be addressed soon so that we can move our business forward, because I can tell you right now, we have a lot of business that is not going forward because of whatever the unreadiness is as far as the council members who are not voting for it. So again, I want to thank you for coming forward, and we hope to get some resolve on that issue very soon. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
May you not give the citizens who are on the agenda the one minute they're supposed to get, if they're not on the agenda?
Okay, I apologize for that. Ms. Franklin, do we have anybody in the audience, any citizens who would like to make a comment?
I would probably drop my motion.
Okay. And Ms. Franklin, come on forward. And Ms....
You know, I understand, according to the attorney, that you are now legally obligated to give us information about why you voted the way you did, but really, somebody has to make you do that? We, we the citizens deserve an answer. You know, if you have a good reason for it, then let us know that that's what it is. But to hide behind that, to say, well, I don't have to tell you why, is just utterly ridiculous to me. And I'm telling you, I'm gonna remember that come election, because that's just, that's ridiculous. I've never, you know, I'm, I'm, I hate coming here, because I leave mad every time I come. And, you know, and this stuff goes on, and you sit here like it's okay, and it is not okay, and I don't care if the law never tells you, you have to... We the citizens deserve some answers about what's going on, and we deserve council people who are willing to stand by their vote and give us an explanation to why, and we don't want people saying, no comment, tired of no comment, we need to know what's going on. And this agenda, like Ms. Williams said, is garbage. You know, you have no idea what's happening here, this is nothing, it's garbage. And to hide behind some goofy legislation that's, who did that, I would like to know, is ridiculous, and thank you. I guess my minute is...
Thank you, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Mosley.
Okay. I just wanted to say this, we gotta pass the budget, right? Is that what you're saying, right?
No, the budget is already passed, it's the budget amendment.
Are we out of mid the budget?
Yes.
Well, I want to say this, at least you're not stealing the money there, okay? Because we stealing at the township.
Um, this, this administration, let me say this, this administration is definitely about...
You're doing our, we're the party.
About cleaning up the mess that was left from the past. We're about placing things in order where they need to be placed. So, citizens, all I can say is, hold your council meetings accountable, that's all I can say. Do we have any further comments from, please come forward, give us your name.
I see I'm probably the youngest, or one of the youngest members in here from the city, and, because I know we have, in the days of the debris, and I will encourage more younger people to come out, because we serve our older ones, and we have to step up to the plate. I admire the job you're doing for the city, I know you don't have the power, actually, to do what you do. And yes, we will remember this, unless you're tired, I have a big mouth, and I go to Facebook, and I let it be known what I see here, and they're saying, East St. Louis has suffered for so many years, we're living in the shadows of the sanctuary all the time, but we got our egos, too big of an ego to make a change for our people. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. Madam Franklin, please call the robe.
Cosner Mosley, Cosner Hamilton-Dane, Cosner Eastern, Cosner Greenwood, Bill Jackson-Hitman. She has five hours.